Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, June 22, 2021, now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by a local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording the meeting? There being none, please rise to join us in a salute to the flag. This time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed -- excuse me -- this evening without first being granted my consent. If anyone wants to speak from the audience, whether it be a representative, or a homeowner, or a resident, please go to the podium so we'll hear you clearly. The first item on our agenda this evening is applicant Modern Structures Incorporated requesting special permit under Section 5.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a Hammerhead lot at 92 Tinker Hill Road, MAP 59, Parcel 5. Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Please identify yourself by name.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and audience. My name is David Sadowski. I'm the principal of DJ and Associates. I'm here representing Michael Pham, the owner of the property in question that is seeking the special permit with the Hammerhead lot tonight. Would you like me to make my presentation or do you have anything else to say, Mr. Regan?
No. It's Regan. Please make your presentation.
Sorry about the mispronunciation, Mr. Regan. We feel that we have presented ample information regarding having the board approve the special permit for a Hammerhead lot at 92 Tinker Hill Road. The lot has 11 and 1/2 acres. We showed the circle that would fit, that would be the required frontage of the area. Actually, we've enlarged the circle to be a 200-foot circle instead of the 180. We have a 50-foot right-of-way that goes all the way back. It does not narrow at all. It was, at one point, going to be proposed to be a cul-de-sac. We've scrapped that idea. It's become too expensive. Because what we are presenting is ample information. We feel we show position of a house, position of a possible septic, and accessway to the house.
You don't have a scale, and the plan's not to scale on the half-size, but how far is it from the well to the proposed septic area?
Well, the circle is 100 feet around the well.
I believe in the town laws, you have to have a designated area for a reserve for a septic system.
I believe you're correct, sir.
That's not shown on the plan. Is there anyone from the audience that has any comments or questions? Seeing none, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Steve?
I wanted to know if the fire department and police had anything to say if they've reviewed this.
I did send this plan and the other plans to both departments, as well as Water Health and Building Commissioner. I do not have any comments from them at this time.
Roddy?
Other than a well and a septic having a proper separation, I'm fine with it.
I have no questions.
Okay.
So... But good, Mr. Chairman, through you, of course. I don't say "primary" septic areas, I say "proposed" septic area, which could include a reserve, because it does not specifically say this would be the primary.
True, but the proposed area you have designated on the plan is the size of the septic system that was required for that home. So you have to designate it on the plan. Secondly, is that going to be a paved driveway in, or just gravel?
Chairman, this is Michael Pham, the owner of the land at Tinker Hill Road. The driveway's going to be 15 feet paved in, as required by the Highway Department, and then it's going to be gravelled all the way through, and it's going to be paved in front of the house again.
It's hard for me to read the plan, but what's the slope on the road? You've got 718 near the road, and then you've got 698?
Excuse me, sir. It's not a road, it's a driveway.
Okay, semantics. It's 10 feet of pitch, and how far is that?
Distance is 460 feet at 10 feet of pitch.
So how do we keep the road washing out from a severe thunderstorm? Or driveway, excuse me.
Sir, I was trying to look through your bylaws. I really didn't see too much written down about driveway anywhere in the zoning or the subdivision regulations.
No, but with the slope of the road and where the contours are, it could wash into House 106's lot, or House 102's lot. How do you prevent that?
Sir, I suppose if the board required, there could be side slopes put on either side to catch anything that could come off of the roadway surface, sir.
Well, the slope isn't going to help. You'd have to put a swale in, on each side.
Swale would be off to the edge, sir, and there would be pitch to the swale. A profile could be drawn to show you that, if you'd like, sir.
Well, profile and a cut. A section of the road would be -- driveway would be nice, because this is a long ways in. I mean, it's 400 feet to the corner, and you've got another, what, 150 feet to where the house is going to be? So it's like 550 feet roughly total length of driveway?
That would be correct, sir, and that's usually typical on something that's over 5 acres. It usually does take a while to get into the lot, sir.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it's a long road, and the slope is very -- fairly steep in there. I mean, just looking at the contour lines behind House 106, you go from 716 to 710, and that's probably less than 100 feet. That's 6 feet. That's pretty good pitch at 100 feet.
6 feet at 100 is only 6% pitch. Roads are -- minor roads are allowed to be 8.
I understand that. It's still steep for water runoff.
Sir, anything over 1 foot is steep.
I'm not going to argue with you. I'm just here to protect the people on either side. So if this gravel driveway washes out, they don't wind up within their property. So I think provisions have to be made to take care of that.
Sir, the developer has just informed me that if the board would so request, we'll pave the road -- or, excuse me, the driveway, the distance it is along the other people's orders, and then after that, we'll go back to gravel where it's our property.
While you're dividing line between that property and the next one over, I believe that's the property line that has the coordinate 38 degrees southwest, the 847 feet, .56 feet from the corner there?
Correct.
That's a property line, right? Got a property line?
You're correct, sir.
So when the water runs down the gravel road, past these people's houses, it's going to hit the corner. Where's it going to go from there? It's going to go right into the other guy's lot. And you're not allowed to increase the water runoff from your property to somebody else's property. It's not allowed.
Could you -- can I bring my plan up to you, and you can point that out to me specifically, sir? I'm not understanding you.
Can we bring the plan up, Kim?
You have a full-size plan, sir. You could see better. Surprise you don't, they were submitted to the board.
So we want to get half-size. So when the water runs down -- see, you have it paved from here to here, right? That only increases the water runoff from 15 feet in to this corner, which means it adds speed. So it's going to hit this corner, and it's going to fade off this way.
And we own both these two lots, sir.
You own this lot now, but you're not going to own this lot. It's going to be another home, right?
Through the chair, it's going to be another family home, sir.
It doesn't matter if it's available, but if they sell up the property, the next homeowner's got to deal with it. You can't have more water run on the neighbor's property, whether you own it or not, and it is running off now. That's a town bylaw. That's a state law.
For a driveway?
For any work on a piece of property.
Sir, I'll submit that any lot in town is a driveway that increases water and runs into someone else's property.
Really?
Yes.
I'll give you $1,000.
Any place in this neighborhood has to have more runoff.
I'll give you $1,000 that I have in my pocket right now if you could prove that my driveway runs out of somebody else's.
I didn't say yours specifically, sir. I have $5,000 in my pocket.
I don't care. You cannot increase the water flow to someone else's property. I'm not going to argue with it. It's a law. Please step back.
Why don't you keep this?
I don't want it. I don't need it.
I think you do.
I don't need it. Is there anyone else in the audience that may have a comment for on the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I might ask a question through you.
Sure.
Is there a potential, in absence of any comments from the fire department, is there a potential that the paved driveway -- well, the driveway can be paved instead of gravel and be widened from the shown 10 feet, a little bit larger? The average apparatus for fire departments is 10 and 1/2 to 11 feet wide. So if they have to respond in an emergency, they're going to be delayed getting down this driveway.
So my intention is to make the gravel road 15 feet, but if I have to pave it, I'll pave it 13 feet, so that way my family will be living down there, and if there is a problem, I definitely want them to be saved, so. And then as for the water runoff, if I have to do a swale on the side to catch the water to -- so that way to maintain the water from running onto someone else's property, because I'm a builder, so I don't want problems down the road, so I want to make sure that the road's not going to be washed out, Chairman. So that's my intention.
It's a special permit, so.
Okay. The way I'm reading this is one plan, which is showing for Lot 7, is a 12-foot-wide gravel driveway, and the other, Lot 8, that is shown, is a 10-foot-wide gravel driveway. So it's different than the dimensions that you're giving us.
Correct.
So is our plan correct, or are the dimensions you're giving us correct?
The dimension was correct, but as I was walking the road, my -- once we got approved, my intention was going to widen it up, because I did notice that the road is not big enough for a fire truck to go down, and my parents are in their 60s, so I definitely want the fire truck to be able to get down there, so.
So Adam, can we make sure that the plan is amended before we approve it to show those widths?
Yep.
That can be a condition, and also a standard condition is to provide an as-built plan that is always reviewed by the building commissioner and building inspector, myself.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to continue to our next hearing.
Should we make sure that they know what we want, like the adequate distance and some type of road swale, the adequate width of the road and everything else, and how much of it's going to be paved, all of it?
The width of the road would be up to the fire department and police department for their emergency access.
That's fair.
And then on the next plan, when they bring it in, they can show the swale, so it's properly done.
With the amended size.
Chairman, may I speak? Is there any way we could just amend the plan and just submit it to Adam?
No, can't do it. You have to amend the plan, bring it in. I don't want to send this out for a peer review, so, I mean, with the minor corrections that we have asked for, and when we get the feedback from the police and fire department, like you said, it's going to be your family there now, so you want them protected. So the fire department will probably dictate how wide they need to have that roadway driveway, whether it be gravel or paved. They're going to tell you how wide they want it to get a fire truck down there. So I'd like to have a motion to continue this until the next meeting.
I'll make that motion to continue this until the next meeting in July.
I'll second it, John.
All those in favor? Todd?
Aye.
Rod?
Aye.
Aye.
So it is a vote. Next on the agenda tonight, 7:05 PM, applicant Modern Structures requesting a special permit under Section 5.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a Hammerhead lot at 104 Tinker Hill Road, Would anyone representing the owner, Mr. Pham, here like the --
It's me, sir.
Okay. You want to just go through what you have planned on doing here for us, so the public will know?
It's going to be the same thing. The road, the road's going to go down to the Hammerhead, it's going to be at to the right. This lot has 11 acres in it, and it's a proposed well and a proposed septic area. Our intention is, once we get approved, we will apply for a perk test on the septic system.
Well, where the lots are designated now, these are already subdivided and recorded?
No, not yet. It's one big piece in the back, about 30 acres.
What, you have to subdivide these two lots, and you can apply for your perk test, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Designated lot?
Yes.
Does anyone from the public have any comments? Anyone on the board? Todd?
Just the same comments and concerns with the width of the driveway and the material of the driveway for the fire department.
Same comments here, looking for comments from the fire department.
Same.
Same.
Well, instead of carrying on, and like we did at the last go-around, I would check your slope, and especially going down along between the two properties here, I know you have a -- I believe this one has a 30-foot-wide easement, if I'm not mistaken. That was previously on the recorded plan. So it's another deal where we have to hear back from the fire department, police department, to see how wide they want that drive, because it looks pretty narrow, and that's even longer than the other one, it appears, on the plan. Quite a bit longer. There's no stations on the road, so I can't really tell. And the same thing with the septic system. You need to show separate reserves, septic system location, and I believe that also has to be perked. Both places have to be perked. Other than that, I don't really have a problem with it. I just want to make sure that the emergency services are satisfied with the width, and they know they can get in there and help you out if you need help, or your family member. That's all.
Did we open the hearing?
Jesus. Have a motion to open the hearing.
I'll make the motion to open the hearing.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It is a vote. Sorry about that.
My fault.
Oh, my fault. I didn't get the right to hit. So stepping back here, I think we're going to have the same comments on this as we did on the first plan, that we want to -- the input from the -- especially the fire department, because their rigs are big, to get it down there in the back, and you are way in the back. And you can't really see your property when you drive by Tinker Hill Road. I see where you put the road, we end up on the upper end, but that's it. You can't really see anything in the back, so it's going to be difficult.
Chairman, that was the whole purpose of buying that land, to stay away.
Yeah, I don't blame you. It's a beautiful area. Beautiful. So I think I'm going to ask for a motion to continue this until we get feedback from the fire department, police department, and the highway department.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It is a vote. It will be continued through our July 13 meeting.
Thank you for your time. Unbelievably, and our --
Next applicant, Eastland Partners.
John?
Division?
You didn't open the first public hearing.
No, I didn't. Do I have to go and do that for --
Do you mind?
No. See now, they didn't open the first public hearing. You're going to open it now, the 7:00 PM one?
Only second one in person in a year, so it's rusty a little.
I know.
I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Rusty.
Yeah, it's always -- The third on the list is which one -- this one I don't have to open, because it's already open.
Correct.
The applicant, Eastland Partners Incorporated, definitive subdivision plan for three billing lots, construction of a roadway and related infrastructure improvements of property located at 50 and 190 Washington Street, MAP 34, Lot 4, MAP 27, Parcel 14. Is there anyone here representing Eastland Partners?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering on behalf of Eastland Partners. Thank you for having us. If I may, take a moment to bring the board up to speed since our last meeting. We received a favorable letter of review from Graves Engineering, and I believe Adam heard favorably from the Auburn Fire Captain Greg Moran and his endorsement of the most recent design of the subdivision, Second Means of Egress Road. We are in receipt of a draft decision furnished by Adam. We didn't have any comments. We had no problems or changes proposed to the draft decision. That being said, we're happy to get into as much details as you'd like this evening, but, you know, I'm happy to review the decision with the board or answer any technical questions about the plans at this point.
Appreciate it, Steve. Is there anyone from the public that may have a comment on this or a question? Please stand and state your name and -- yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. Doreen Goodrich, 5 Lowery Brook Drive. So welcome, everyone, back to a live meeting. As an abutter and a resident, and I held meetings, I have to say it's been very difficult to follow these remote meetings for such a large-scale project, and I apologize for missing last week's meeting, two weeks ago. I thought they were all remote until after the 15th. But having said that, I'm not sure where we're at in the project and whether Eastland Partners will be coming back for further review once they know what's going in, and you have to do site plan approval. But as an abutter and a resident, and I'll just bring it to your attention now, I recognize that it's a Route 20 project. It's commercial property, but they also abut close to 200 residents in that 50 Washington Street. Some of those residents have been there, what I've learned, for maybe 54 years. So I just want the board to keep in mind, when you're giving the final approval for these projects, be it sound buffers, barriers for site lighting or whatever, there is a huge neighborhood right behind there. One of my concerns also --
Tuck Farm Road?
I'm sorry?
Tuck Farm Road?
Well, I'm talking about Windbrook Acres right now, because that's where I reside. I know Tuck Farm is up there as well. And again, Windbrook Acres is on Route 20, and I acknowledge it's commercial property, but those people have been there for, you know, some of them 54 years. So they were residents long before everything was developed. So I just want the board to keep in mind that it is a residential area right there. But one of our biggest concerns right now is the traffic, and if any of you -- and I know that Mass DOT, I caught the end of the meeting, Mass DOT is doing a review with turning lanes and stuff, but if any of you travel Route 20 from Thursday afternoon through Sunday at midnight, Route 20 is a nightmare for three and 1/2 months, because everyone gets off the 146 exit at the Mass Pike, travels down Route 20, and gets back on the Pike at 84. And again, not just where we are, in that whole area. A lot of seniors live there, and I want to be sure that emergency equipment can get there, you know, fire equipment if they need it. I see a lot of ambulances where we are. So I just want the board to not just think of it as a huge commercial development, but just keep in mind that there are a lot of residents who live right behind there.
Well, what I've seen on this development, it's a big area, but it's not a huge development, so it's only going to be two or three buildings. When all said and done, if I'm not mistaken, Steve, am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The subdivision's going to create three lots, primarily on 190. There is remaining land at 50 Washington Street. 50 Washington Street was included in the application because of subdivision road, which occupies a triangular piece of that land west of the power line easement. So, you know, legally and technically, it's part of the subdivision. You, the neighbors and abutters, will be notified. We will have to come to the planning board for site plan review on each individual lot. You may be aware that we've already submitted a site plan on one of the lots, on the 190 parcel, and the same process would happen on anything on the 50 parcel.
I haven't seen any site lot.
I just received a public hearing notice. Went to the telegram today, and the notices are going to be going out tomorrow to the abutters.
Okay, so by our next meeting, we should be ready to review that.
So we'll be notified there is a long way to go.
So is that the lot that's closest to the trailer park down there, Route 20?
Nope, this is the lot at the rear of the 190 property, closest to the Tuck Farm.
It's way down in the back on the lot. That's the one you can't see from Tuck Farm Road. It sits way down, yeah. So when we get to the lot that abuts, well, abuts the power easement first, and then it goes to the trailer park, correct?
Right.
So just keep in mind, when you do your site plan approval, and I appreciate your comments, Doreen, that maybe we could put a line of arborvitae's down that property line if we're close and there isn't enough natural fencing there?
Yeah, you've got a very robust landscaping requirement, so we would absolutely meet or exceed that requirement.
Very good.
And my understanding is, I know personally, I've been in touch with Windbrook, and I think the applicant has been as well, so we've got lines of communication. We're happy to meet with them to get their input when the time comes, see what's going to be satisfactory to them. We definitely want to respect that they're there.
Oh, yeah.
And they're for a long time.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just one final comment, because Eastland Partners knows this. We've had Eastland Partners before the town, before many, many boards, and one comment that always stands out to me is, you know, at each and every meeting, they say, "We want to be good neighbors," and I believe that they want to be good neighbors, but I also believe that it's important that these boards have it in writing as to what the expectations are, so that every neighborhood, not just my neighborhood, is protected.
I'm well aware when we have lots going into neighborhoods and stuff, and with the site plan that has to come in, it has to go through us, and it's in writing. It's on a plan, and it has to be registered to the registry of deeds before.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to make these comments finally.
You're welcome. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone on the board? Do you have anything else to present, Steve?
No, Mr. Chairman. Just happy to help and discuss aspects of the decision that are necessary.
I'm just curious. There was a question quite a while back about an encroachment on -- that the Mobile Home Park at least already existed and was there for quite a considerable amount of time. Is there anything being done with that?
Not as part of this application. I believe the applicant is still willing to work with the Windbrook folks to deal with that encroachment. Just hasn't --
At one point, it was conditional on getting the sewage line to run through Windbrook, but I think they decided they didn't, I think, did not want to do that.
They didn't, yeah. They preferred not to have the sewer come through their property, and then the Auburn Sewer Department preferred that we convey the sewer up on the town's land. That would avoid sewage going through the siphon under the diversion channel. So, like I said, I know the applicant's still willing to work with Windbrook on that encroachment issue. Again, they're going to be neighbors. Just hasn't -- the issue went away when the sewer went away, or took a backseat, you know, rather, but it's still on the table.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep. Do we know the elevation between Parcel 50 and Windbrook Acres is a consistent elevation? I know on Lot 3, with the Tuck Farm Road, we had significant elevation there. I know on Lot 3, with the Tuck Farm Road, we had significant elevation there for a barrier.
Well, 50 Washington Street's property drops off quite a bit from the elevation at Route 20. I would guess that at some point in history, Windbrook, when they developed their, their park, probably brought some fill in, but they're, they're slightly, slightly below Route 20, and then they're slightly above a bulk of the property at 50. I would guess, based on some concept plans I've done for the 50 Washington Street property, that we would do some filling there to bring it up, probably even with the Windbrook property, not quite as even as Route 20, because that would be a lot of fill. But right now, the 50 property is lower than Windbrook, and both are lower than Route 20.
And Lot 50 hasn't been cleared except for that part that is?
Nothing, actually. Nothing's been cleared on 50. Not even the triangle with the subdivision road is going has been cleared.
Okay. And is the intention to keep a significant natural buffer there, or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's nothing proposed on 50 now, other than the subdivision road, which is west of the, of the power line easement. So when something happens at 50, you guys will be the first to know. But yeah, we'll, we'll absolutely intend to comply with the landscape buffer. It costs money to do, to clear trees that, you know, don't need to be cleared just to replant, so anything that can be saved, we'll, we'll always try to be saved. So.
Do you have any questions?
Just with the decision through you, Mr. Chairman, to Adam, the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, are those prescribed in the zoning by law? I know they're not industry standard.
That's the standard for the town. I already talked to Adam about it. In our previous meeting, we agreed to 7:00 to 5:00.
Right, that's.
And then 8:00 to 12:00 on Saturday.
Right, okay. And that's, so that'll be reflected, it will be amended? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
No.
Steve?
No.
My question is, and our curiosity is, where beyond the, the siphon are you gonna tie in? Obviously, it's gonna be toward Route 20 of the siphon chamber, if there's a siphon chamber there, there should be.
Yeah, so up the Tuck Farm condominium development, has a pump station, they pump into this gravity sewer line that runs on that ridge, that I believe the Pakachog facility also connects to. And then that already runs on the high side of the diversion channel. So when we pump up to that, we'll be gravity on the, on the high side of the diversion channel. Where it goes from there, must get to the Pin Rock Pump Station, which must pump.
Yeah, it comes underneath the channel, comes down Route 20, goes by McDonald's.
Got it.
Then it gets pumped from there to the Upper Blackstone Tree Plant.
Right.
Have you gotten an easement from the town yet to connect?
We're, we've done some work in the office, and we're probably a week or 10 days away from talking with Town Manager's Office and Adam on getting on the warrant, but we've spoken a lot with Bill and Joanna, and I know Bill's departed with Joanna as well, so yeah, we'll be working with them, and Bill and Joanna said they, if, if we agreed to go to that sewer manhole, they'd have our support at town meeting. We'd have their support at town meeting.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the gun. I'm sorry, go ahead, Doreen.
May I ask one more question?
Sure can. We're in our room, you wouldn't have so far to work.
This recent conversation refreshed my memory of my last question. So it is my understanding that when they do tie into the town sewerage, it does have to go to town meeting for approval. So town meeting, I believe, you know, unless there's a special town meeting called, you know, and we have multiple items, town meeting won't happen until October. So, so my question is, if this sewer project has to go before town meeting for approval, how much of this project can move forward without town meeting approval for a sewer easement? Even taking his word out that it will get support from town administration at town meeting, you know, it's ultimately up to the town meeting members, so I'm just wondering how much of this project can move forward without town meeting approval for a sewer easement to tie in.
Well, without any property buildings being built, which you can't do because you don't have a site plan approval, he can do all his roadway, his walkways, his tree lining, driveway entrances, the whole nine yards, except for the buildings, the drainage in the buildings and the site lots, and the lighting. That all has to come before the board.
Okay, but they can start their sewer connections, hoping that they get town?
He wants in his road, he just can't tie in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to approve this pending town approval on the connection for the sewer connection up on, on the side of Pakachog Hill.
Were there other conditions that would need to be met? I think they addressed everything, like I just wanted.
Yeah, everything addressed with the Graves letter.
Okay.
The big thing was that separate fire access road.
I will make a motion to approve this pending town meeting approval for the sewer.
May I have a second?
You're in a weird particular way. If, say, town meeting does not approve the sewer easement.
Pending approval from the town. So make a motion, approval of the, of the plan, pending approval of the town's approval of the easement. You can shorten that up. You're good at that.
It will.
I will make that motion, John.
Thank you.
I'll second it, as stated.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John, will you close it too?
What's that?
Close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second it.
Close first, then you, then you ought to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gotta get our sea legs back.
Yes. Now we have a motion to approve the plan.
I will make that motion with this, as, yes, with, as presented.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much. We will be back after the appeal period, well, we'll be back for site plan and.
Does this have to go before town meeting, or the selectman, to get approval of the?
Yeah, the selectman will probably put it on the warrant. That'll be our approach.
And when's the next town meeting?
October.
October. Don, our can.
There's a special meeting.
Yeah.
There's a couple of issues.
So you may have a special meeting planned in October?
It's May.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. See you soon.
Next on the agenda is modification to Midstate Mitsubishi 810 Washington Street. Is there anyone here representing Midstate Mitsubishi?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mike Hillsinger. I am with Conserve Group. We are architects and builders, and we've been awarded this project. 810 Washington Street is currently an automobile dealership under the ownership of Ray Butler, who's here in the front row with us tonight. He has recently become a Mitsubishi dealer. Previously, he was a used car store. And part and parcel of this dealer agreement is to bring his facility up to the Mitsubishi design standards, which would include a new facade, standard Mitsubishi.
We've heard of the other dealers, you gotta meet the.
It's tough.
The manufacturers.
It is, for sure. No question. So this is a very, you know, unique store, it's a small store by manufacturer's standards, and we have made an effort to incorporate an automobile showroom and a service drive lane, which is more of a drive-in bay, due to the nature of the building itself. And what we have done is try to keep that impact as small as possible. So we've taken what is an alcove on the front of the store, for anyone who's familiar with it. The building consists of a pre-engineered metal service center to the right and a wood frame structure on the left, so, which is set back from the facade of the metal building. And we are going to sort of fill that void with an automobile showroom. We are trading, right now it is paved area, five or so parking spaces, four or five, and trading pavement for roof, so impervious, impervious area stays the same. We lose five parking spaces, display spaces that will be replaced with two interior displaced spaces, so the net loss is three displaced parking spaces. Outside of that, the building will be sprinkled now. It's over 7,500 square feet. Mass general law requires that we sprinkle the building as part of this. Ray had the foresight to have the water line brought in already, so it is there, just awaiting the rest of the sprinkler system. And, you know, we hope you find that this is an improvement to the existing condition on the site as it is today.
Through the chair. Adam, can you bring it up?
Thank you, Steve.
John, can we just ask him for a look at this, so we can kind of know where it is? Whereabouts on Washington it is? I can't picture where it is.
It's right near by Appleton Road.
Okay, it's on the left, did you?
It's on the right of Appleton.
Oh, it's just that little lot right there.
Right on the corner of that.
It's gonna be Midstate Mitsubishi.
It's like two houses over there.
Midstate always been the town for that. You want to go through the building addition?
Sure. Let's see. Try to stay close to the microphone, too. So, existing building is marked here, you'll see it on the right. The pre-engineered metal building is this section here. The frame structure is here. We'll be filling in this. We have still very generous setbacks, we have no issues with setback.
Beyond the required, you will be on the required setbacks, property lines and.
Yeah.
Mine only, well, does anyone from the public have any questions? Comments? Anyone from the board have any questions or comments? Steve?
Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering, there's, doesn't seem to be any dimensions on the building, and there doesn't seem to be any dimension showing setback to the side yards. And it doesn't even indicate on the plan what the actual required side yards are.
Have you, have you looked at the application, have you looked at the plan?
No, I've looked at the plan, sir.
Sit down, please, you don't know what you're talking about. I know what the setbacks are, I know what the setbacks are.
I just asked a question, sir.
It's stated in this application. One more one of you, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Period. And if you don't leave, I'll have the Auburn Police come in and remove you. I'm done with you tonight. Steve, you got a question?
Just wondering, we have to vote on minor modification, correct?
Yes, we do. I want to go through all the preliminaries, to see what he's gonna do, what else he's gonna ask, motion to either make it a minor or major modification.
For the addition.
For the addition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Todd, any questions?
Just looking at the parking layout, how many accessible parking spaces do you have? Looks like there might be two next to the addition.
One is required in this location, so the one on the right side is the accessible space.
And is, that's van accessible?
Sorry?
That's van accessible, so it has the?
Yes.
Anything else, Steve? Ron?
A lot of these spaces that you show, inventory spaces?
Yes.
They're not just, they're not parking for customers or employees, they're.
Oh, no, no, yeah, it's an automobile ship, so many of them are, yes, inventory spaces.
Which ones are the employee parking spaces?
Around on the backside of the building.
Thank you.
Which ones are the customer parking spaces?
Customer spaces are here, directly across from the showroom addition.
That's eight spaces?
Sorry?
Eight spaces, or the eight and the 11?
Yes. Here, there's two, four, six.
Eight there.
Eight.
Isn't enough for a building of this size and?
Yeah, this is.
So many parking spaces per square feet, and off the top of my head, I don't remember what they were called.
Correct, I believe the calculations should be on the sheet that you have there. I'm, I'm looking at this, and I, I don't see them on this one for some reason. I think this was an earlier plan, but the ones that you have should have the calculations in the top right corner, yes?
It's on my plan.
Calculations are?
Yeah. John, eight employee parking, 22, for the square footage of the building.
Okay. It's 22 spaces.
I got it.
I'm assuming fire trucks can get in and out of there.
How wide are the bays? You have only one curb cut on Route 20?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
We have one curb cut on Route 20?
There's only one curb cut, yes.
So how wide is it between the parking spaces on the right side, where a fire truck may come in? Is that the only access to the property from public road?
That's, that's the only access from the public road. We're making no, no changes to the layout whatsoever in this space.
But you're, are you reconfiguring any of the parking lot as far as striping?
No, sir. Well, except, with the exception of the area directly adjacent to the, the handicap space is moving.
Okay. Just want to make sure there's room for a fire truck to come in the roadway around the right side of your building and all the way around. It looks like there is, but I don't know what the dimension is from that.
Yeah, this, there was.
It's all paved anyway.
This work in the back, I believe, was completed in 2013, was it, Ray? Yeah, but the last project was 2013. So this site was developed and modified in 2013, came, came before the board and was approved, and everything was, that you see here, as, as it existed at that point.
Okay.
Send this out for comment, get any comments.
That's it?
I did send this out.
What is the width of your entrance road? The immediate driveway off Route 20 looks a hair less wide than the one in a little bit.
I honestly didn't measure it, because it's been in existence this way and was part of the package that was approved in 2013.
If I'm not mistaken, in order to have that curb cut that you have now, had to be approved by Mastoc way back when, maybe 2013, when you reconfigured everything.
Well, it's at least three parking spaces wide, and that's 24 plus, so it's the minimum of the 20-foot, four-foot turn and aisle.
Okay, I believe Adam sent this out to the police fire and.
Building, Board of Health.
We haven't got any comment back, like we're all set, anything?
I thought there was a comment from the Board of Health from the email. Is that not, is that not for this? Darlene Foil, June 10th, 810 Washington Street, Midstate Mitsubishi?
Those comments were rectified by, the plan that shows the septic and the sewer water now on it.
Yeah, you pump out to the sewer main on Route 20, right?
Yes, yep.
Well, we didn't reconfigure the lot. So the drainage from the new addition, I know you haven't increased the, the total runoff or impervious area.
Correct.
Where's, is that drainage gonna be interior, exterior?
So what we, yeah, we'll pipe it to the same location it goes to now, so we'll take the groundwater, it turns into roof water, comes down, downspout roof leader, and goes right into the stormwater management system as it did before.
Okay.
And just in Darlene's letter, it says, "The modification proposed shows in addition to the existing building, however, no additional flow is allowed to the current existing septic system." Is the applicant connecting? Is the applicant connected, and you are connected to sewer?
Connected to the sewer, yes.
Got a little pump station in the back. Any others, have any comments?
No. John, I just don't know why this is considered a minor modification with...
I asked you that, yeah. That was my next question. We have to decide whether this is a major or minor modification, and I'd like to have the board's opinions on that. Todd?
I would defer to the more experienced members of the board in terms of minor versus major.
Steve?
So I think we've had a few questions here that I'd like to see on the plan. I think the measurements hanging on there would help answer a lot of questions and concerns, and it doesn't seem like a large construction project, but without having all the answers on there, I'd like to see it. I wasn't on the board in 2013.
I believe in their application, it states the setback from Route 20, it states the property line setbacks, it's not on the plan, but it is stated, we can have to have that put on the plan, yes.
You will find another plan submitted in that packet, I believe, you'll find another plan from a surveyor to follow that information on.
I did not see that.
The architect stamp. I don't think we got a, I don't think we got a plan with those dimensions on it from a surveyor. All I have is two plans stamped by an architect, nothing by RLS.
Bear with me one moment, there was a surveyor's stamped plan submitted with that.
It's just this piece right here, this addition right here, shaded part, and all they did was, these are the parking spaces that were in there.
Is that that?
It's a survey.
It is. It's in front of us, Ron. It's on the front page. All the dimensions.
The 16s.
Yeah, we were looking right through the page, it's the front page.
Excellent.
And it is stamped by an RLS. So, I don't believe this is a major modification to the lot or the site, because it doesn't change the runoff, impervious area is still the same, he doesn't need to add bathrooms, he doesn't need to add parking spaces, he reconfigured his parking spaces to meet what's required, but I have a motion to have this designated as a minor modification.
I'll make a motion that we consider it a minor modification.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Todd?
Aye.
Steve?
Upstate.
Todd?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. May I have a motion to approve pending comments from the police, fire, and emergency services?
I'll make a motion that we approve pending the information from the police, fire, and emergency service groups.
May I have a second?
Favorable recommendations by them.
I'll second it, as stated.
All those in favor? Todd? Ron?
Aye.
Steve, you abstain?
Abstain.
Nick?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. So as soon as we get either a positive or we're not concerned, it's fine.
Very good, thank you very much.
See, well, you got to get a building permit and all that, but even as far as this, we'll...
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is meeting minutes?
Yes.
And could I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of 5:25, 2021, as presented?
Make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Todd?
Aye.
Steve? Ron?
Aye.
Nick?
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't here at the meeting.
You can watch the video.
And I didn't watch the video.
I voted a aye, it is a vote.
Connectivity problems.
And is no one for seen business by me, town planner update, ethics?
Ethics, Todd, if you can send us our ethics, that's all set. Aside from Todd, you can.
Okay.
I checked with the town.
Anything unforeseen by you?
Nope, I don't know if anybody else has.
Do we need to review the A and R?
No, we can't, it's not approved yet. We'd be approving an A and R that doesn't exist.
Okay.
So with that in light, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, it is a vote. Our next meeting is July 13, 7:00 p.m. Same time, I don't know what's going to be in this rumor, I'll find out.
I'll see.